Welcome to the Clark Township Planning Board Reorganization Meeting. In compliance with the Public, Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by mailing the annual scheduled meetings to the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, Union County Hawk, and Tappan to Clark by posting such annual schedule on the bulletin board in the town hall reserved for such announcements, and by proper filing of said notice with the township clerk. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and to come appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Okay, I'm going to do roll call. Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Mr. Alrick?
Here.
Councilwoman Menitti?
Here.
Mr. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Triola?
Here.
Mr. Altman?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Steinberg?
Here.
Mr. Klee?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to open up a nomination for the Planning Board Chairman. Somebody like to make a motion?
I nominate Kevin Koch.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Mr. Alrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Menitti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Klee?
Yes.
Okay, Planning Board Chairman appointed.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'd like a request for nominations of Vice Chairman. Nominate Mike Triola.
I second.
Second.
Anyone else?
Who seconded?
Mayor seconded. Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Mr. Alrick?
Yes.
Miss Councilwoman Menitti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Klee?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donna Mazuka as Board Secretary. A second?
Second.
Who is she? Who is she?
Mayor Bonacorso?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Alrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Menitti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Klee?
Yes.
Any chance Congress is watching these proceedings?
Going too smoothly.
Professional appointments, all professional appointments are made pursuant to the fair and open process, and submissions have been reviewed by the township in compliance with NJSA 19:44A-20.5. I'd like to make a motion for Albert Cruz to be appointed Board Attorney. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any others? If not, roll call.
Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Mr. Alrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Menitti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Klee?
Yes.
Next is the Township Engineer, is the Board Engineer. I'd like, I make a motion to make Rich O'Connor, the Board Engineer. Thank you, Mr. Triola, for seconded.
I'll second it.
No others?
Who seconded it?
Mike Triola.
Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Mr. Alrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Menitti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Klee?
Yes.
Any and all correspondents of the Planning Board is available at Town Hall for the viewing of the public. As such, I'd like to make a motion, I have a motion made to dispense with the readings of the correspondence. A motion. Mike Triola, thank you. Second?
Yes.
Mike Altman.
All ayes?
Ayes, yes.
Aye.
Yes. All right. Next on is the site application, Hackensack Meridian Health, 1180 Raritan Road, Block 60, Lot 22.
Mr. Chairman?
Please raise your right hand. I solemnly swear to tell the whole truth in this proceeding, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to say, hello, thank you, I'm sorry, not as astute as I could be with the machinery. Mr. Chairman, John Junko of Giudano Hall and Cissé Lepurino is the attorney on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is Hackensack Meridian Health. The application seeks to seek approval to utilize a portion of Block 60, Lot 22, which formerly housed the Barnes &amp; Noble. And in it, that site had three tenants, a physical therapy center, Barnes &amp; Noble, and a Chili's restaurant. Hackensack Meridian Health is subject to your approval, intends to occupy the physical therapy site and the Barnes &amp; Noble to develop an ambulatory care center. The ambulatory care center will provide a series of various services provided by Hackensack, I'll call it HMH, to the public and provide those for outpatient and of course for appointments. With regard to this particular site, the medical use is permitted, and in April of 1998, the board adopted a resolution approving this application for, not this application, but the application for the site to provide for nine-by-eighteen parking stalls, 300 stalls where 348 were required, and provided for some other relief, side yard of 5.2 feet, eight was required, open spaces 7.6% where 10% was required, and driveways exceeding 28 feet, and three facade signs. There are in fact four facade signs on the building today, and that's part of what our applicant will request. We're requesting bulk variance relief to permit 320 parking stalls, which are the 306 on-site plus 14 credits for the make-ready EV spaces. Additionally, 342 would be required. The applicant's also proposing to continue the previously granted variance relief and including the number of building signs for, number of building facade signs for the site. Mr. Chairman, I have several witnesses. My first witness who I'd like to present is Adam Westenberger, our project engineer. If you call him and swear him, I'm going to offer him as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Mr. Mayor, before we begin, before we begin, I did review the affidavit of publication and the affidavit of service, and I find them in compliance with the municipal land use law, and that this juris, this board has jurisdiction to hear this application this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Adam?
Please raise your right hand. I solemnly swear to tell the whole truth in this proceeding, so help me God. I do.
Thank you.
Adam, could you advise the board of your name, business address, the firm you're associated with, and your professional standing?
Sure. My name is Adam Westenberger. I'm from Dynamic Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey in good standing. I received a Bachelor of Civil Engineering from the New Jersey.
Motion to approve at any point?
I can.
Thank you. So, Adam, for purposes of the record, could you just identify the site in terms of size, zoning, and lot and block?
Why don't we mark in the exhibits?
Okay. All of these exhibits that you're going to present were prepared by you, are those others under your direction for presentation to this board for this application?
Yes, that's correct. The first exhibit is the aerial map exhibit. I'm going to mark it as A1. It's dated today's date, January 5th, 2023. The second exhibit is going to be designated A2. It is a site plan rendering. It's a colorized version of the site plan that was submitted to the town as part of this application.
Yep.
Again, with today's date, January 5th, 2023. This site is identified as Block 60, Lot 22, in the township of Clark. It consists of 4.41 acres of area, and as John alluded to, Mr. Junko alluded to earlier, it is currently developed as a, with a retail and restaurant building located on it with supporting parking. It is fronting on two roads, Central Avenue, where it has two driveways, two full movement driveways on Central Avenue, and two full movement driveways on Raritan Road. To the north, there is additional, across Central Avenue, there is additional commercial, I'm sorry. This lot is a commercial, in the commercial industrial zone. To the north, across Central Avenue is additional commercial industrial district. To the south, across Raritan Road is general commercial and neighborhood service district. To the west is a single-family detached residential district, and to the north is additional, I'm sorry, I have northeast, southwest, and some other confusing things here. To the west is additional commercial industrial district.
Adam, with regard to our application, the Chili's restaurant that's presently on-site will remain and continue operations?
Yes, that's correct. It will not change.
So with, could you just advise the board about our, the HMH proposal?
Sure. The proposed portion of the building will occupy what is currently a Barnes &amp; Noble retail store that has since closed. It consists of 39,016 square feet. That will be a Hackensack Meridian Health network location consisting of professional medical offices as well as a physical therapy component. There's a physical therapy component there today, and generally that will remain the same size.
Did you have an opportunity to review whether those uses are permitted under this zone?
Yes, all of those are permitted uses.
Okay. Now, further, when you submitted your plans, did you submit to the town, and if so, could you describe what modifications you proposed to the site?
Yes. So, in addition to the interior changes to facilitate the construction of medical offices inside the building, we also looked at the condition of the site, and with the guidance of some of the township professionals, we've agreed to make improvements as to the landscaping and general appearance of the site, repairing fences, repairing trash enclosures, things of that nature that, that need an update since this was approved back in 98. And then additionally, we had, there was, there was questions raised about the ADA accessibility of the site, and so we performed a survey to check that the site was ADA compliant. There were, there were areas that were not, and so we are planning to reconstruct sidewalks and parking spaces as necessary to meet the requirements of the accessibility.
Standards. Now, with regard to those accessibility standards, they're particularly having to do with the slope or the level condition of the site?
Yes, just over time, areas that were constructed have slightly settled. They're a little bit overexceeding, which unfortunately means that they need to be reconstructed, which our applicant has agreed to do.
Okay. Now, are there any other physical improvements you plan to make to the site?
I'm sorry?
Physical improvements to the site, for example, are you complying with the electric vehicle charging station statute in ordinances?
Yes. So recently, the state of New Jersey has required the installation of make-ready electrical vehicle charging stations, spaces for new applications, and to comply with that, our applicant will install 14 EV, sorry, will install the facilities for future of 18 or 14 EV charging stalls.
Now, some of those have to be in place at the start. How, what is that, one-third?
One-third of them have to be installed at the time of construction, so there will be five charging stations installed at the onset of the project.
And then the second?
After, after three years, another third, so another five of those spaces, and then the remaining four would have to be installed after six years.
In six years. So in six years, there'll be a total of 14 EV?
Correct.
Charging stations?
Yes.
Unless the applicant chooses to advance that schedule?
Yes.
Okay. Now, with regard to the design on the, of the plant, you proposed some landscaping improvements. Could you just briefly describe that to the board?
Yes. As part of the 98 approval, there was landscaping proposed within some of the concrete, I'm sorry, within some of the parking lot islands that have since deteriorated and no longer have any plantings in them, so the applicant has agreed to reinstall those and maintain them, and there was also some overgrowth in some areas, so it just falls under general site maintenance and continuing that original approval.
Now, will the parking lot be re-stripped?
The parking lot will be restripped where needed. There's areas that are going to be repaved for the accessibility improvements, so those will be restripped as needed, as well as the fire lanes being restripped per the request of the fire marshal.
Now, with regard to the signage, can you just describe what's proposed?
Sure. So regarding the monument signage, there is no change to the freestanding signs that are currently on-site, so those will remain as is. As far as the building mountain signs, currently there are four. There are two on each frontage of the building. There's a sign over the Chili's at 65 square feet. The Barnes &amp; Noble had two signs of 185 square feet on each frontage, and the physical therapy had a 66-square-foot sign. Two signs are permitted along, one for each frontage. There are four existing. Our application proposes to maintain those same four signs. The Chili's sign will remain against 65 square feet. The new signs for the Hackensack Meridian Center will be 210 square feet each, one on each frontage, and then the physical therapy sign will be 103 square feet. All of those areas are well below the permitted maximum sign area for a building. However, like I said, we are still requesting a variance for the number of signs, but that will be maintained, maintaining the existing number.
And with, along with your submission, you receive a review letter from Richard O'Connor, the Board Attorney?
Yes.
Or engineer, excuse me?
Yes.
And were you able to review that letter, and can you advise the board, are you able to comply with the requests?
Yes, we are able to comply with everything, and we also want to provide a little testimony on some of those items.
Okay.
So, we are agreeing to comply with everything, and in addition, number 4.1 is regarding traffic testimony. We'll have a traffic engineer later in tonight's presentation. Table 5, I'm sorry, comment 5.2 is regarding the illumination of the site. There is a township requirement that half a foot candle is maintained within the parking areas. We conducted a site lighting study on the evening of October 25th to determine that the average illumination is 0.58-foot candles, which exceeds the requirement, so we're, we're meeting that. And finally, for items 6.1 through 6.5, we're agreeing to comply with those items. There's things, oh, I'm sorry. One of those is the hours of operation, which I have. I apologize.
That was the next question.
Okay.
Before you go further, you're referring to the December 16th, 2022 letter from the Township Engineer, is that correct?
Yes.
Thanks.
I have December 16th here.
There were two letters he issued.
Two later letters.
Yes. One is November 28th, and one is December 16th.
Yes, December 16th.
And you're complying with all the comments of the engineer. Thank you.
The hours of operation was a question that was asked by the professionals. Most of the practices will operate during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, nine to five. There are some medical practices that may offer evening hours for, for patients a few days a week, up to at the latest, probably 8:00 PM. The urgent care operates seven days a week, from 8:00 to 8:00 on Monday through Friday, and from 8:00 to 5:00 PM on the weekends. And the number of employees for the medical facility is anticipated to be about 50 to 60 employees at one time.
I have no other direct questions for Mr. Westenberger.
Anyone on the board have questions for this witness? See none, I'd like to open the floor. Does anybody in the public I would like to come forward and ask questions of this testimony? Have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike and Mike. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward to ask questions or comments on this testimony, and only this testimony, have opportunity later to have any general comments, please do so. Seeing no one coming forward, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, my next witness is Corey Chase, our traffic consultant.
Would you please call your full name? Certainly, it's Corey, C-O-R-E-Y. Last name's Chase, C-H-A-S-E. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Corey Chase. Corey Chase. Do solemnly swear? That I will tell the truth in this matter? So help me God.
Okay. Corey, would you advise the board of your credentials?
Certainly, Corey Chase, principal of the firm Dynamic Traffic, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, license is currently in good standing, been qualified as a traffic engineering expert.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Corey, amongst other things, you were asked to prepare a report for this board in terms of traffic, but primarily focused on parking, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you come to, did you prepare a satisfactory report?
We did. It was dated November 7th, 2022, previously submitted to the township, reviewed by the Township Engineer, Township Planners. Our focus was to evaluate the existing parking supply and then evaluate the parking demand of the existing Chili's restaurant, as well as the proposed ambulatory care facility to see if the parking variance could be granted and would be detrimental to the impact to the subject property. So, what we did was we conducted existing parking counts at the Chili's restaurant to determine the peak parking demand of the existing restaurant that's going to remain, and we also conducted parking counts in the existing Hackensack Meridian Ambulatory Care Facility in Eaton to get an idea as to what the parking demand would be of that facility. We combined those two peak parking demands and found that the existing Chili's restaurant, as well as the redevelopment of the subject property, would be projected to generate a maximum of 182 parked vehicles on-site, peak parking demand. That's approximately 50%, 57% occupancy of the parking field that's going to remain on-site. As Mr. Westenberger testified to, there'll be 306 parking stalls on-site, whereas 342 are required by township ordinance. We do get that 14-space credit because we are providing the make-ready electrical vehicle charging stations, so the parking supply is actually 320 spaces for consideration against the ordinance, but there'll only be 306 spaces on-site. But again, you know, based on the research counts, based on the existing demand of the restaurant, as well as a comparable existing Hackensack facility, we feel that there's going to be more than sufficient parking supply on-site to accommodate the redevelopment of the property. We also took a look at national parking data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, compared that as well. We looked at the, the non-coincidental peaks, so the peak of the restaurant and the peak of the medical facility, even though they won't occur at the same time, the restaurant's obviously going to peak later in the evening when the medical facility is winding down or even closed. We combined those two peaks to just look at an overall worst-case scenario, and that was still going to only generate approximately 80% of the parking field. So, significant factor of safety exists, and the board should be able to feel comfortable in granting this parking variance.
Do you also have an opportunity to examine the internal circulation?
We did, and again, as Mr. Westenberger mentioned, two existing driveways on Central Avenue, two existing driveways on Raritan Road. We're not proposing to modify any of the existing set access points. Those are going to remain in the proposed condition, and largely the internal circulation, the parking aisles are going to remain as well. Given that this was operating as a retail facility with a restaurant, you know, we, it's my professional opinion that it can continue to operate in a safe and efficient manner with the redevelopment of the subject property.
Also, did you evaluate the location of the proposed EV spaces?
We did. And again, you know, in my professional opinion, in working with Mr. Westenberger, we feel that those are appropriately located.
So, in conclude, would you just give the board a conclusion? Are you satisfied there's adequate parking, adequate access, and adequate circulation?
I am, and again, you know, based on the counts conducted at the existing facility, a comparable facility, as well as evaluating the national data, we looked at several data points and feel there's more than significant evidence to support the proposed parking supply, and it'll be adequate and sufficient to serve the needs of the development.
Anything else you want to add?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other direct questions.
Mr. Chase, the Eaton Town facility that you used for comparison, that had similar operations and similar times of operation?
It does, yes. And it's similar size, too. It's slightly larger. It's approximately 40,000 square feet, but similar operations, it provides similar care, so we felt it was a comparable facility. And what we did was, we actually calculated the parking rate based on the square footage, and then applied that to proposed square footage here to get an accurate comparison.
Thank you. Or is the population in Eaton Town similar to Clark? Is that?
I didn't evaluate the population, sir. It's a, it's located on a busier road. It's located on Route 35, so, you know, in my professional opinion, being it's located on a primary state highway, it has significantly more traffic actually passing the facility than you do on the two frontage roads here. So, from a comparative purpose, you know, I would expect that to actually generate more traffic than this facility.
And how many parking spaces are there currently on this lot?
In this lot, there's 306, and 306 will remain.
So there's 306 right now?
Correct.
Thank you. Do members of the board have questions? If not, I'd like to have the, open up to the public for any questions of Mr. Chase's testimony, and his testimony only. Have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Triola, Mr. Altman, thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward and question Mr. Chase on his testimony, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to close this session.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll call Deborah Vern, our architect.
Okay.
Hello? Deborah, D-E-B-O-R-A-H, Vern. That's V as in Victor, E-R-N-E. I, Deborah Vern, do solemnly swear that I will tell the whole truth at this proceeding, so help me God.
Deborah, could you just advise the board as to the design features that you were asked to incorporate into this project by our client?
The-
Counselor, can she just tell her experience so we could accept her?
Oh, you know what, I'm going to, I didn't offer her as an expert, excuse me. That's what you said, I don't, could you offer the board your credentials? I apologize.
I graduated with a Bachelor of Architecture from Cornell University. I've been a registered practicing architect in the New York metropolitan area for over 30 years, working on commercial, educational, and healthcare for both new buildings and renovations.
Motion to approve. Mr. Altman, please proceed.
Even though I jumped the gun, we'll go back to the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I jumped the gun by not asking you about your credentials first. Could you go, describe to the board the proposed plan?
Okay, sorry about that. The, the plan consists of basically taking the Barnes &amp; Noble space and renovating it to house a number of, of different practices. We've got the imaging, the OB-GYN, multi-practice, a little lab for blood work, and then we've got the existing physical therapy area that will be renovated, and adjacent to it, urgent care with its own separate entry next to PTO entry.
And Barbara, what exactly are, will the applicant be doing to the site in terms of improvements?
It's, the interior is a true renovation. From the exterior, it's really just minor renovations. It's primarily painting. We are modifying the entry vestibule at the front, where Barnes &amp; Noble entry vestibule was slightly. That's really it, and new signage.
And new signage. And the new signage. But you're going to basically repaint the exterior and modify the main entrance?
It's a refresh, yes.
Now, with regard to the interior, you've identified already what's going to be involved. But could you just explain, perhaps using the exhibit, where the vestibule will be and how the physical therapy will enter?
Barnes &amp; Noble main entry. Thanks. The main entry still remains where the Barnes &amp; Noble main entry is. So, this will be the primary entrance with a to it is the entrance for the urgent care facility. So, they are both at the little area where you walk up the steps to the little platform there.
Is there an interior system for Miss doctors to circulate and staff to circulate?
Yeah, there's, there is this lobby that's along the front for all the patient waiting area. At the end, there's a door and a connection from the lobby for a separate circulation system on the interior that connects all of the suites. Doctors will use that, and it also accesses the back of house, bathroom, staff space, that sort of thing.
In your architectural opinion, do you feel that the interior is consistent with the other ambulatory care centers that have been designed for HMH?
Yes.
And you're satisfied that you've modified the exterior to be consistent with the existing architecture in this commercial zone?
Yes.
And one important question that most boards like to hear is, is there a system to dispose of medical waste?
We have a back of house area that has the, the clean and soiled supply that's picked up by the vendor. Adjacent to that is also the medical waste storage. So, basically, each suite has their own little medical waste storage. They collect it, bring it to that room so that it is picked up in a way consistent with the Department of Health regulations, all from the back loading dock.
And likewise, how will medical supplies and equipment be delivered to the site?
Equipment deliveries are also from the loading dock. They go to the back of house, those storage rooms for clean supply, and then it's distributed to each of the suites from there.
I have no other direct questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any from the board have any questions for this testimony? Seeing none, I'd like to open this testimony and this testimony to the public. Have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Charla, thank you. Second by Mr. Lance. I mean Lance, thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to make comment on Ms. Vern's testimony? Please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to have a motion to close this. Thank you, Mr. Charla. Thank you, Mr. Lance. Lance again. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my last witness is our planner, Barbara Allen.
Hi, good evening.
Would you begin like everyone else by spelling your name, please?
Yes, my name is Barbara Allen. My first name is B-A-R, B-A-R-A, and my last name is Easen Edward, H-L-E-N.
I, Barbara Allen.
I, Barbara Allen. Do solemnly swear. That I will tell the truth. In this proceeding. So, help me God. So, help me God.
Barbara, would you advise the board of your professional credential?
I am a principal with a firm of beacon planning and consulting services. I'm a licensed professional planner and an AICP. I've been working with beacon planning since 2008. I have been accepted as an expert before communities throughout New Jersey, including Cranford, Carteret, Livingston, et cetera.
Pro motion.
I was expected to be cut off a little bit before that.
Barbara, we asked you to prepare a study concerning the variances and the impact to the community. Were you able to do that?
Yes, I was.
Can you advise the board of your findings?
Yes, before I go into the specific variances, I always like to look at the community's master plan. You have a 2003 master plan and a 2013 reexamination. Goals and objectives include promote a balance of land uses, including residential, commercial, industrial, public, recreational, and conservation uses, and to safeguard the tax base, preserve the economic balance, provide for continued sources of employment and tax ratables through the appropriate use of non-residential land. The application is proposing a permitted use within the district and reutilization of an existing structure in a manner that will contribute to the community's tax base and provide expanded employment opportunities. The variance this evening is limited to parking, which is an existing condition. And actually, the site received a prior approval for a deficit in parking, and one is requested with the current application. As was testified to by our traffic engineer, there is more than sufficient parking provided on site. Therefore, there aren't any necessarily impacts to the community associated with the proposed use. The variance would be appropriate under both the C1 and C2. C1 is an existing condition, and as the site is predominantly developed, there'd be limited area for additional parking. And C2 as the fact that there is sufficient parking in the current configuration, and it presents a better alternative as it allows the reuse of the building as it stands today. With respect to the municipal land use law, I would say that the application promotes G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations, and M to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and the more efficient use of land. The facility exists and is more than sufficient to accommodate the use as proposed. With respect to negative impacts, I do not see any substantial detriments. The site is in within a commercial corridor and a well-traversed roadway. So, the traffic has been anticipated as the use is permitted. As we've heard, there's sufficient facilities on site to accommodate the trash. Stormwater will continue to be handled as it is today. And the noise, well, the noise was, any noise would be anticipated within the zone as it is a permitted use. That being said, and finally, with respect to signage, there are four signs currently, and four signs are proposed. It is appropriate in order to identify the use along both roadways, as well as properly identify the entrance to the physical therapy space. That being said, it is my opinion that the application meets the criteria for variance relief.
I have no other questions.
Mr. Ricky, do, Paul? Does this satisfy all the questions you had in your comment letter?
I am, Mr. Chairman. I did prepare a letter to set the 21st. I kind of evaluated from my perspective the variances. This is clearly the activation of the site. We're going to park the verge of the chase. I found a new corporate address. I'm hoping that a larger facility, lower than the man for parking on the site. For the, for the, in terms of signage, you know, the number of signage that's being proposed exists today. A technical issue could involve the business of the third, the third.
Although Twinborough operated as a separate use, this, this use, they're still going to have physical therapy services, and they're still going to utilize that door. From a planning perspective, it's always appropriate to have signage over a door into a facility. So, from, from a planning standpoint, my letter is pretty short and brief. It's, it's an excellent application, one that, that I could fully support from, from my perspective.
Thank you for your answer.
Mr. Chairman, may I just comment?
Yes.
Mr. Richie, you had in your report, section three, listed a number of conditions. One that we didn't address that I want to confirm. You, you and Mr. O'Connor had requested the trash enclosure be upgraded, new doors and so forth, and our client is agreeable to that. All of the conditions in your review letter of the 21st, under paragraph three, are acceptable to our client.
Yes, and thank you. And the only reason I was clarifying in there, you said you were going to repaint the building. It wasn't clear if there was going to be a color change. The intent was for the colors to match between the enclosure in the building.
Well, I'm going to trust the architect, but I'll bring her back up to confirm. Deborah Vern spoke from the audience saying that, yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
All coordination, good. Anybody else from the board have any questions to the planner's testimony? Seeing none, I'd like to open up to the public to come forward and ask any questions to this testimony. Thank you, Mr. Altman. Thank you, Mrs. Steinberg. At this point, anybody from the audience would like to come forward, ask any questions to the planner's testimony? Seeing no one come forward, I'd like a motion to close this session. Thank you, Mr. Triola. Thank you, Mr. Altman.
Mr. Chairman, that completes our presentation. The intention of our testimony was to address the issues associated with this application to justify the variances and describe the proposed use. I would submit to the board that an ambulatory care center like this is inherently beneficial to a community. As you may be aware, HMH is in the process of developing a system, a system throughout their network of these ambulatory care centers. And this is one of the, I think it's the third one in, put into, that they've seeked to put in service. I think that we've met the standards with regard to the variances, and I'd ask the board to grant approval to the site.
Thank you.
I just want to make or have a clarification. You've already indicated you're going to comply fully with the board engineer's letter of December 16th and fully with the planner's letter of December 21, both in 2022. What is the status with respect to the Clark Police Department report of November 1?
I missed the last portion, I'm sorry.
The police report from November 1. Are you going to fully comply with that police report?
I, I think the answer to that is yes. I don't remember it exactly. I know we had no objections come forward.
That specifically refers to, I would suggest, making the entire intersection a four-way stop intersection with stop signs and stop bars?
Oh, yes, we're full compliance with the proposed signage plan.
And is the same true of the Fire Department's report of November 21st, 2022?
Likewise.
Thank you.
Board, any questions or comments?
There's a lot of conversation about Lance. Was there any conversation about the sidewalks along there?
In terms of the sidewalks, what the conversation was, they had to be level to meet the ADA standards. That became, your consultant asked that we confirm that. Our clients weren't able, our clients' engineers weren't able to do that without a resurvey. They went out and resurveyed and found that some of the sidewalks had settled and that the, that the level has to be reinstated. So, those will be removed, restored, and they'll be installed at the proper, level, I guess, is the proper word, and be in a position to make sure they're inspected and meet the standards.
Additional questions on board? If not, I'd like a motion, open the meeting to the public for any questions or comments on this application. Have a motion. Thank you, Mr. Triola. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. If anyone from the public would like to come forward and make any comments, questions on this application? Please do so. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like a motion to close this meeting to the public. Thank you, Mr. Triola. Thank you, Mr. Altman. At this point, does the board have any general discussion? Or anyone have a motion regarding this application?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Hackensack Meridian is a very big medical organization, and I appreciate them looking into our town to provide service for our citizens and those who are in the surrounding area. And I'm going to make this comment because of some of the social media comments. Not that we should make our decisions ever based on that, because some of it can be far-fetched, as you well know. But Barnes &amp; Nobles came many years ago. People were very happy. Barnes &amp; Nobles left, and some people felt bad about it. I can understand that. People talk about, do we need another medical center? Board, as you know, we don't make our decisions on whether we think we have one or 20, not enough or too much. We make our decision on what is put in front of us, what is allowed in the zone, and what is beneficial for that site. And this, to me, is very beneficial to that site. When a community has buildings that stay vacant, it is detrimental to a community. It's not something we want to have. People talking throughout, and, you know, it's not hundreds of people. It's your few social media hound dogs that are out there. Well, what would you like? Would you like a supermarket there? Would that create more traffic? Would it be cleaner? You know, I remember years ago, every time there was a vacant building that went out, a bank moved in. And people would say, another bank? And my answer was always, a bank is a clean use. A medical center is a clean use. There's no shopping carriages. There's going to be no trash coming from bags going in and out of the store, people buying something in the store, eating it, dropping it on the ground. So, I'm going to be supporting this application tonight, and I wanted to say for the record, you know, everyone has an opinion on where should go, where, when, how, and why. We, as a board, are making a decision tonight on what is put in front of us, what is in the zone, what variances it may take to do this. So, I will be supporting this application tonight. Thank you.
Excellent summary, Mayor. Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Mr. Alwark?
Yes.
Councilman Minetti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cle?
Yes.
Application approved.
Chairman, I have one additional request. Is it possible, our client would like to be able to start demolition in between now and the time that the resolution is perfected? Is that something that the board can permit?
You've got a resolution that's now turned over to the Building Department.
I think he would tell you that's at your own risk. I mean, as a mayor, I have no problem with it, long as the Building Department's okay with it. But I've seen that we have what, we have, we have to, I'm sorry. You have, you would have to bait the site. That's important. You'd have to check with the Health Department, the Building Department, make sure all that. But until we confirm this resolution, I would always say you're at your own risk in doing that. But check with the Building, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to town.
All right. At this point, I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting. I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting.
Chairman, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor. A motion to the public come forward to discuss any matter they may have. Is that a motion?
A motion.
Thank you, Mr. Triola, Mr. Altman. Any from the public would like to come forward and discuss any matter before this board? Please do so. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like a motion to close the meeting to the public. Thank you, Mr. Triola. Thank you, Mayor. Is there any new, new business to discuss? None? Any old business? Okay, our next meeting will be February 2nd, followed by March 2nd and April 6th. I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Triola. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.